A matter of housekeeping, I spoke with Dr. Simone. Um, just to make everything official and formal, he would like for us to take a vote on accepting Mr. Jennings' application as our new CDE. So at this time, it is in the agenda, even though it wasn't written on the agenda that way, because it's in the packet. So conversely, the attorney will not do anything afoul of per blessing. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept Mr. Jennings.
Set.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lockneak, and we have a second by Commissioner Root. Sorry for the discussion.
See, I have a question whether or not he's gonna move to Leedy County, and I didn't get a chance to ask him that. I think it ought to be asked, um, this evening when, um, when they have a discussion with him. I don't know that it's necessary, but I think it would be good.
It's not a requirement?
It's suggested, I believe, in the...
Yes, sir. But, um...
So I just think he should be brought up.
From personal knowledge, talking, speaking to Mr. Jennings, um, I think the arrangement he has is, is he has, somebody's going to allow him to live at their place, their farm, and it's either in Leedy County or just across the line in Siffis County, because the commute back and forth to Pasco would be more than he can endure. But he, he does have a, a family, he has a wife that still lives in Pasco, and I think he's going to remain there for a certain amount of time. So he's gonna have dual residency during the week, so he's able to attend to his needs here, but then go home and see about his ranch or his farm he has at home. But that's definitely a good question to be asked, Senator Samson.
Thank you.
Anyway, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, she's the fellow saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to IT, Mr. Remington.
Good morning.
Good morning. Do you want to do this presentation, or do you want to just answer questions as we...
Answer questions. I mean, I gave you all the presentation before.
Okay.
I can recover that again if you like.
Okay. Well, let's, uh, forward where you go. Feel like your presentation, or you want to just answer questions?
We don't have any...
Give us a, give us the Cliff Notes version of your presentation.
Let me give you some. Um, so what I'm proposing is bring or allow AT&amp;T to come in and connect all the outlined county departments, like Gray Department, Billy and Zoney, Solid Waste, basically connect them all up to it, all on the same local area network, and it flows through the courthouse. So internet will be provided, there'll be a single internet point for all of them, all of those buildings, which will be here at courthouse. There'll be a single security measure in place for all of that, which will be here at courthouse. But each individual department would operate independently on their own network. It's just all connected and runs through the courthouse, and it's all on private network. It's not part of the public internet.
Um, in my language...
Yes, sir.
You want to put everybody on the county, county department, department heads, whoever, on one internet to run through. It's gonna be at the courthouse here, and, but, but it will be private to the public. Is that what you're saying?
So basically what it is, is taking each individual department that's outside of court, over the exclusion of the attorney, and making a connection, allowing them to connect up. And those connections that are each one of them, they can all come off each other if they want to via the network. But it's, there is a point of access to that, a little private.
Yeah, mine, that's what I wanted to hear.
But they do have internet access, and they're getting access to the flow through the courthouse.
But I could, may I argue, in our place, say, my phone's down, can you come look at it? That's between me and you.
Yes, sir.
And that's not public?
Well, it is a public...
Public record, yeah. But, uh, it doesn't go out to the...
The tracking is on.
The tracking is public.
Yeah.
Their privacy.
Tracking is private. So it's a much more secure place, you know?
Yep.
Mrs. Brooks?
In order to manage...
Let us...
You're gonna be charged now for the nine thousand dollars?
No, ma'am, that's not for emergency magic. That's actually about a solid waste, and that's a non-recurring charge, it's not my charge. As soon as he is having the charge, I negotiated it down from seventeen thousand to the nine thousand. Um, but that's basically for them to run the fiber from off of twenty-seven down the road out to the Solid Waste. So all these, again, are fiber connections. Is your...
They're all fiber optic?
Yes, sir, they're all fiber optic. It's all running off the fiber optic that runs up and down to twenty-seven. So that, that nine thousand is a non-recurring fee for AT&amp;T to bring the fiber from where it's at twenty-seven out to Solid Waste. I've, I've worked to get that down from seventeen thousand, the original one was seventeen thousand. I'm still trying to work to get that to just keep the whole thing. This is where we're at right now.
So, so all the departments want to have to go on this?
No, they don't, they don't, um, quite honestly, I can't see why they wouldn't, because it gives them a, a steady, reliable, guaranteed internet connection. It allows them to have better disaster recovery for any of the systems that they have currently in use. I guess, I guess if the department does want to get on it, they might too, I guess. That's their prerogative. Actually, if that's the board's prerogative, if that's what they want, if that's what happened. Honestly, I don't understand why they wouldn't.
At one time, you had said that it was actually gonna be cheaper going this way than, than the other route. And then it was said that in some departments it would be more, some departments it would be less. What departments will it be more?
So overall, overall, for the county, there'd be about a forty-four thousand dollar annual savings. Overall, for the county.
I see that, right?
Yes. Um, but each individual, individual department, they could pay more. Um, say, take, we'll just take Billy and Zoney, for instance. Billy and Zoney has a DSL connection, my Florida network. I believe they pay about seventy-two dollars a month. I don't have to pay...
Seventy-six sixty is what you're giving them.
Okay. So they pay about seventy-six sixty. So of course, yes, they would be paying more. But... Their reliability would greatly increase. Somebody from Billy and Zoney is here, I'm sure they'd be able to tell you that if they go down, they could be down for days without any internet connection. That's generally because all these internet connections are what they call consumer-grade internet connections at, at the departments. This is a business class or a business-grade internet connection, not public. If there's a problem, I have a direct line into the AT&amp;T, they don't have to go through this person to get to that person, and finally have somebody else call to find you out, and schedule a time to come off in two days or something, whatever you feel like. This would be direct line in AT&amp;T, you'd make a phone call, and you're only within a half an hour, forty-five minutes. The problem's easily being resolved. And there's also stipulations of service level agreements with this. So after a certain period of time, the attorney can attest to this, which is right, the service level agreement. After a certain period of time, AT&amp;T starts giving it back on downcoming. Whereas SBIC, Uverse, my Florida network, there is no service level agreements. It's, it's, well, when it comes back up, it comes back up. And, you know, quite honestly, not all the departments have to have a good reliable, steady internet connection to do business, a hundred percent. But as we move forward in the future, I'm sure the technology coming to help various departments, they will need a good line.
Well, something as simple as, that people have time, you can be disrupted by an ordered net connection. I mean, if they do that online and the system's down, um...
I'll talk about the new kind of business.
Well, just, I mean, this, that's something everybody who does now, sometimes is disrupted. From where you're sitting, is this, is this correct? I would, I would just go across the board, I try to light up the box, but... Is that, that's correct? Because I want to ask you some questions about some of that, and I don't want to be off the line on... That's correct, yeah. First of all, I guess on one of these pages, it says, uh, it says, port connect, I guess, port connection, P-O-R-T-C-O-N-N, port C-I-R?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the...
There's a court charge per connection. And then there's a charge for the amount of speed that is delivered to that port.
So, who might faster it would be, three hundred dollars, which is the, the one gig is... One hundred and seventy-seven. And that's a one-time charge, recurring charge yearly?
Yes, and it's recurring monthly.
Month, so that's, that's what it's spelled out over here.
There's a monthly court charge, and then there's a monthly access charge.
It looks like the clerk, county commissioner's office, tax collector, property praiser, and HVAC, heating, and air conditioning. Guess we have some sort of monitoring that it was on?
Yeah, I believe maintenance has monitoring on the NC units over here. They have individual goal on, I think, of course.
So they did say thirteen hundred and eighty-five dollars, seven hundred and sixty-three, fifty-four, now to reduce down to four sixty-seven.
Sure.
Where we see a little bit of a difference is, um...
Your biggest concern is you're gonna be here in courthouse and the original network.
And what about public safety?
Yes, public safety.
Public safety.
They're all the same, okay?
And I appreciate reliability, and, and I, you know, that, that's not a, I understand that, um... You know, because I know, like, whenever the internet goes down, transportation just, honey, calls me, then she calls you, and then she calls me, and tells me some more about it. Because that, that's all their software for their routing and all that gets messed up. And she's not calling and yelling about you, she's just calling because it, it's got her haywire. So, you know, I, I'm all for dependability. I'm all for overall savings. And if this is, this is accurate, there is considerable amount of overall savings. My concern is, is now that we went through the budget cycle, um, you know, I don't know how each person handled their budget exactly, you know, as far as how they're paying for their net, but the landfill, for example, you know, they figured sixty dollars a month for land, for internet, let's say, um, that'd be thirty-six hundred dollars a year. Now they are, gonna be three hundred and sixteen dollars a month, that's a considerable increase. How, how will we handle that? That's a budgetary issue for us to figure out how we're gonna move money, people will be able to move money around, or we're gonna have to amend everybody's budget to allow for that. That's one of my concerns, um, that we're kind of fleshing out right now. John, I'll get you in a minute. I'm gonna let the board do this, then we'll do the employees and the public. That's, that's my, my biggest concern, because I, again, I do recognize the overall savings, but some of these departments are gonna see an increase, and we're gonna have to be sure that we're aware of that if we go forward with this. Whether they come back and say, we need more money, or...
That's right. If they hit, they're gonna run out, they're gonna come back, poor, need more money, or we're gonna have to go, we don't have to give to them.
And I want to be sure that we're, we're aware of that, including, say, yay.
Well, and then the landfill, what, for nine thousand, seven hundred and five rock there?
That could probably come out capital improvements. So we have, we have, somebody said sign capital improvements for that, is that correct? Sheila? Sheila, will you be able to take that money out of capital improvements, the, the one-time cost of running the fiber optic line to landfill?
Yes, sir, we have fifty thousand budgeted for computer, in time, computer maintenance.
Like I said, I'm still working on trying to get that reduced. There is... There's a tower that's very close to the landfill out there, and I know there's fiber running to that. So using that as leverage, instead of having it run straight down the road, it's just, really depends upon the right of ways, power to test it, and... Put that all back, AT&amp;T, or Karen, you can get that worked out.
Ready to do the contract as best I can read through it. Let's say we agree to this, and, and six months down the road, all services not any better. Do we have an option, is there, is there a guarantee in here that says that service will be better, and if it's not, we can opt out without any sort of penalty, or is that...
Um, I did not see that. I was, I asked that question of the rep, and even though it's a thirty-six month agreement, the rep has stated that they've never forced anybody to under it. Of course, that's not, that's not the situation, I just not legally binding either, but, um, like I said, there's service level agreements in there on this. This is business class. We have ten megabit connection to the landfill, and I can prove, which I am always good at, and I am not giving my ten megabit throughput, they will fix it. They're, they are contracted, they'll fix it, because they're contracted on ten megabits. So as far as not proving or, or any problems, I mean, we have leverage at our side to be able to...
I know that the Uverse is jumping, so anybody that saw the Uverse here is definitely way better off, because it, it fails at least once a week. Or sometimes thirty minutes, sometimes for hours, an hour. But, you know, that, that part of that Uverse contract was, we're supposed to be on fiber on the highway. So, but that's a, you know, if they're guaranteeing us fiber, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, they have to live up to on their end. That's out of your control, I'm just, I'm not blaming you, you know, just pointing that out, but that's a, that's a concern, that, that what we currently have provided force is not, not good at all.
I spoke to many department heads, that's kind of what spurred this call.
Does anybody else up here have any questions for Karen at this time?
So it's gonna be between the county commissioners, and that's what will be the pair?
Mr. Rivers, I do IT, I know to play it. Who does?
I'm concerned, I'm concerned this, the customer, this Lucy, this Leedy County government, not Leedy County, or the county commissioners.
Sheila, I don't know how that would be, I mean, I'm sure we'd get that, that heading changed, or, or our word needs to be changed with, I'm sure...
Did she say any, did you review the type? I glanced at the agreement, but there were attachments that I never got. I don't know if what's in the board package is those attachments. So I didn't go into line by line, because I need the attachments to know what they're providing. So I, I noted that, Ms. Lilly, when I first looked at that, I don't need to change. There's some other standard stuff they have in there that we don't do. We have to talk to that, but into the, the weeds with it, I did not look at it completely. I need, I need all the additional stuff.
There are no links provided?
There are links, but it says the following additional documents, I don't know what those are, um, the services, there, there wasn't a description. There's nothing that says they're gonna lay the fiber optic for nine thousand dollars.
It wasn't like appendix to the, I said, uh, PNC?
And I, and I didn't go into all the detail, because I thought, okay, I don't have it, but I sent out an email for that, and I haven't gotten any of that, so...
I got an email, but I didn't, I guess I just didn't understand that you needed the additional. Did you note in an email that there was links, or that there was access to the internet, or other stuff on the internet?
That there's additional things that aren't in links. The chairs and the guidebooks are found at the link, but the, uh, the services, I don't have that.
I can drive that for you.
And, and these may be it that are in the board book. They need to be a lot more detailed than this, because I can't have that.
Well, what's in the board book is generally what I created, aside from the contracts or email.
So, no, I haven't done a thorough review.
All right, anybody else up here getting questions? If we have any, we'll go down to Stan.
I, I, why, uh, Neil, I really do. But I'd like Ms. Annie to get the full group the way she wants it.
Well...
Before we make a decision, unless we're on a time frame, I mean, I just, I'd like for her to be satisfied.
I don't think we're on a time constraint. We don't need to rush into anything.
I'd like for her to look at it and make, and, and become aware of it. I like the idea, I really do, verify being on the thing, get amused.
Well, it leaves the groundwork for future growth. It also gives AT&amp;T more incentive to bring other services in for the consumers in the area.
Avid!
Um, because they're, they're actually using their fiber here now, you know? I mean, you take any small business here, brands are cheap, and they're not, you know, they can't afford it. But with the county coming in on fiber, AT&amp;T is not gonna use an extrusion that they put in place.
They're tapping into it.
Yeah, and that gives them more incentive to offer better rates to the consumers here.
Uh, hold on. I just, I, I would feel more comfortable about it if you'd sit down with Ms. Annie and tell her, or let her tell you, exactly, you're, you're talking with the, the head man. Got, you're the negotiator.
I, okay.
All right. And Ms. Annie needs to tell you what she needs in the contract, all right? But she says contract is good to go, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm looking good with it, because I think the idea is a good idea. I really think, everybody's on the same team.
I'd say it lays the groundwork for future growth, for stability with the county as far as the internet, they're gonna have to get on the way, because they're saying, you got, more and more businesses are gonna be down over there, and...
You ain't tricking me to get called up like Hillary did, now, did you?
And you're gonna shred in your emails?
I can't provide you an email, sir.
Well, I, and, and I think this, this is kind of the beginning of, of our discussion we'd be having, um... But it's kind of like we had to get everybody to the table to talk about it, because we need to see what kind of problems are here, we can discuss the issues so we can work those out. But, you know, it's, it's like some other things that happen sometimes. There ain't a sense in doing a lot of legwork, but at the end of the day, there's nobody has the appetite for it. So I, I think we're accomplishing something here today, working out this, getting a, a rate schedule in front of us of what the, what the actual savings are. And in addition to now, you know, instead of having Ms. Annie work on the contract, quite frankly, that if, if the three of the five of us said we weren't gonna accept no way, it would just waste her time, it would waste her parents' time, it would waste our time. So I, I think the consensus is that we need to get a contract with certain things specified. As the chairman, I would, I'm gonna task you to work with Ms. Annie in hand, um, in, in whatever issue she has, we need to have it spelt out, including the issue of running that cable, running that fiber, and, and the exact cost, and, as well as, um, other issues that have been coming out. You know, as far as what other parts of the contract or part, things she can't, she hasn't seen or hadn't laid her eyes on. We need to be sure we have all that, so she can look at it. But, um, I mean, unless there's something I'm missing, and I'm pretty bright. This is a huge savings for, for, you know, forty-four thousand dollars a year, internet. The individual departments aren't gonna see it, you know, per se, but overall, the county's gonna see it, and at the end of the day, we are the ones who pay the bills. You know, it all comes through us to be sent back out. So the clerk sees bigger savings than some other people see, but at the end of the day, it's still our money. It's not, he's not generating that money, it comes through part of his budget, and then...
Well, it's not just the clerk, though, I mean, the board office is...
The board office, yes.
Benefit from it, the tax clerk, and, and property praiser benefit from it, and so...
And then you did the reliability.
Three-year major, three-year major, the licensed officials are gonna benefit.
I'm not turning this into a clerk thing, this is just, I'm looking at the dependability of the network, and having something that's reliable and secure. Security is probably more important than reliability.
Yeah, you go from eight, ten security threats to just one. And, you know, the, the equipment that's used right now is just your little home access routers, they're not very secure. And we're going, of course, through here at courthouse, I have commercial-grade security.
Miss, I think, if...
Go ahead.
I think that, uh, once you take the figures and put them on the table, you'll find that the three of us here in the courthouse is larger savings than some of the outlined departments. Some of those departments is gonna go up, but I think as a board, y'all can sit down with those numbers and say, okay, you know, Oz, you paid back this month. I mean, he's saving seven hundred a month, and mine's maybe a hundred and thirty, I don't know what Linda's is. But I think there's a way to work that around to where it can get paid, because the savings are coming back to the board. And it's already in budget. Oz is not gonna use all his budget to pay it, I'm not either, so we just pay that part back.
If you're willing to do that. I'm glad you said you'd do that, that's, that kind of rubs, that's my next question, but...
Why don't we set up a workshop? For the different departments and the board?
Yeah, once you, once you get pretty close on the contract, once you're ready to move forward, and after workshop, it'll be good, so that Oz and Linda and our departments can all be here. If this is gonna require a budget amendment going forward, it probably will with some of the outside departments, we would want to know that. We can do it like at one o'clock, and every, all of the department heads can ask questions and all the stuff there. We want it to be all-inclusive, naturally, given the number of board members.
And, I mean, just according to these numbers are provided, we'd save seventeen hundred and thirty-six dollars a month in the courthouse. That's clerk, the board office, tax collector, property praiser. So, again, those are your big users, and those are the, those are the, probably the, the departments short of transit that rely on the internet the most.
Seriously, well, that, regarding, they are very heavily...
So are they good to go out there and chief them, with their, there's... I mean, I'm talking about, is there, is there gonna be a charge for fiber to them?
Well, yes, they, they, that's, they're included in that list that you have.
Yes, but is there a, see, I don't, I didn't see that...
There's no charge on our fiber today.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking you.
No charge with...
To the landfill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Tony?
Going one step further on what Ms. Lilly said, would you also include key personnel who use this in your workshop? Because the input from them would be valuable.
It would be an open invite. I, I would entertain anybody who wants to come. I mean, we've, we've done this before with the department heads, just to discuss this, and try and, I tried to get some feedback when I first started working here.
So you have spoken to all the department heads, or most of them?
The majority of the department heads, yes.
We've had a department head meeting, so...
We've had a department head meeting, uh, so, in the early goings, but I'm saying now, as this gets closer to reality and that we bring them all back, plus the property appraiser and the tax collector and whoever else is involved. With the main user, because like in our office, you wouldn't ask me anything about that.
No, yeah, that's why I have my husband. Uh, but I see Miss Lisa sitting back here in the back, and I'm very concerned about the libraries. But I know that the state takes good care of them and, um, I would hate to see, you know, any, us pull away from any state.
On that list is just the county library here, the office here.
Okay.
The county library, you mean the administrative library.
Yes, ma'am, because we can't, most of the libraries are, the internet's provided by the municipality and we serve as it, not by the county.
No, that's not accurate.
And...
Okay.
And the county does not pay for mine. State aid pays for mine. So, there's essentially no savings to the county to have the library on the list.
Your administrative office.
Correct, yes, sir.
None, none of the libraries outside has been involved in this, you know, just a change. It would only be, and we don't have to run it out there.
Well, and my understanding is, is that it's either gonna be three hundred and sixty-seven or three hundred and sixteen. I wasn't quite clear, but I pay one twenty-five now. So, what you do is essentially be balancing other departments on the back of state aid to libraries, which is not correct way to do it.
And, and that can come off the list.
Okay.
But didn't you say you don't ever have the internet out there?
We switched to SBIC a couple of months ago and it's been working beautifully because we're on that tower, you know, a direct line of sight from the tech Bronson Water Tower. So, it's all working beautifully.
Not with your John, John's got something.
John.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm currently right now paying the same thing, one twenty-five, SBIC, and ours does go up from time to time. But, um, I'm fine with the, with, with the, what you're trying to do. What I'm not fine with is, um, that go, I'm going, essentially going a fifteen hundred dollars to four thousand dollars basically a month is what I'm, or, excuse me, a year is what I'm fixing to go up to. Um, but, um, your statement said emergency management is one of your biggest cost savers. How do you figure emergency management is one of your biggest?
I think you misspoke, you meant emergency EMS.
Yeah, EMS.
Okay, all right. And then the next question is on the, um, disaster recovery. How do you get disaster recovery out of internet service? Disaster recovery out of just internet service? I mean, what's the, what's the disaster recovery?
Okay, um, so, this is not something I've laid out with the board at all, but, um, what I'm working on is, once you have everybody connected on fiber.
Right, the internet.
Well, everybody is, everybody's connected on fiber and the internet runs through here in the courthouse. If you have a machine that you rely upon or a server that you rely upon on a daily basis, and I'll just use here at the courthouse, we have a, a system called Benchmark. Benchmark is what's used to track all the cases going up for the courts. Anything that has to do with child support, anything that's legally, okay? So, that system is very, very important here at the courthouse for our clerks. That system, if it went down for any given period of time, we basically put, leave it down in court. On the service.
So, where does that data go?
So, what I'm working on is, there's, it's called a dark site. And basically, it would be, my benchmark servers here in the courthouse would be replicated someplace offsite. Whether it be Tallahassee, Jacksonville, Atlanta, okay?
Would that be in a cloud?
In a dock. Well, yeah, cloud is, it, a cloud is just a marketing term. It would be, it would be replicated someplace offsite. So, of course, the internet connection to replicate it offsite to wherever it was, wherever it was located at, again, whether Jacksonville, Tallahassee, Atlanta, all right?
But that's an additional cost, right?
Yeah, eventually, yes, eventually that will be additional cost. And, and this is a three-year plan for the county, but here's, here's what it provides for you. Now, we, we just went through a good sized storm that came through here, all right? But let's say the courthouse had gotten taken out. Let's say that, that this beautiful hundred plus year courthouse, one of the walls fell in on my servers back there, so now we have nothing. It would take months for me to rebuild it. I have the data, but I still have to work the hardware. I still have to be able to configure it, I still have to get it all back up and running, connected for my users to be able to use. If I had a dark site in Atlanta, we could set up temporary spot wherever in the county. As long as there's internet connection, they would be able to conduct business within twenty-four hours. And that's where you get the offsite or the dark site.
So, you don't have a remote offsite server somewhere now or?
No, no, sir, we don't. We replicate offsite, no, 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 I have backups that go offsite. But we do not have a dark site. We don't have the infrastructure. And that's one of the things I've been trying to work on here, is getting the infrastructure, the backend infrastructure, built up to the point where we can provide that for the courthouse and the county. And that's, all this is a precursor to getting all this stuff.
I thought that you were saying a dark side.
No, I, no, I, there's no dark sides out there.
Come on over. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cannon?
Mr. Shannon. Yes, this word folder here, and it says next to the link in page eight of eight. Page six of eight, termination charges. There will be fifty percent termination charges. Unless a different amount is specified in the pricing schedule for any unpaid recurring charges for the terminated service or service component attributable to the unexpired portion of an applicable minimum payment period in continuous, okay? And that is tab eight four C, type of termination charge. So, there's the first thing you asked earlier. There wouldn't be any, but there's your answer, okay? That's why I strongly suggest, first of all, there's any, okay, the contract.
Read it up, read the first one up there on that page.
It, it, it's final, please, now, one more thing here. A few more things. The port connection, we see one G, hundred million, a hundred mega, I assume. And so, why does not each one get the same size of port connection?
It has to do with the user base, ma'am. If the user base is smaller, I don't need to have paying more for a larger port connection to that, to that user base.
And what does port C I R stand for?
The I R C is the actual white technical, technical type of port that is provided.
Good, so, good. And which one, for which department proposed AT&amp;T prices? It says on the top, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And so, from the bottom is four sixty-seven. Who is, who is the two with four hundred and sixty-seven dollars? Come on. There is no department listed, so.
It's, it's a continuation, it's the courthouse, there'll be four sixty-seven. That includes the clerk, the property appraiser, tax collector, and, uh, the board office. And then another four sixty-seven would include public safety.
And that again has to use, to do with the services, I mean, the use that they would have for the increased price. Okay, now, here comes one more thing. AT&amp;T, I used it many years ago, they never, repeat, never delivered the promised speed that they want, okay? And as a direct result, I was paid a person who simply canceled the contract in those states they had no termination charges or I wouldn't have been a customer, I don't believe, in paying termination charges. What assurances would we have? That they don't play the same dirty tricks on the business account?
That was my question earlier, well, if they don't provide what we got, what are, what is our outcome?
Hey, man.
And as part of the workshop, we would definitely say that, I mean, K and P, that would be your answer.
This, this dark side, I mean. Well, you never just... This is stuff that we need to know how. So, I think in, I think it's good that we know about it now, but I know there's gonna be more questions. And I think we, we really set up that workshop.
Yes, ma'am, I agree, but I'm trying to lay the foundations here, that's why I'm trying to do this. But everything I've come before the board for, whether it be the equipment I've already talked about, whether it be this, I'm trying to lay the foundations. I mean, we can talk about things that are possible, but if you don't have the four wheels on your car, you ain't going up there. I'm trying to put the four wheels on the car so we can...
Still trying to get to that dark side.
Imagine the workshop, the workshop, by the time that Ms. Brown and Darren and whoever looks into this, the workshop would probably be after the second evening of November. So, the new board would be seeing even the ideal time for the, and for the workshop.
Ms. Tony and then Mr. Jordan.
Okay, um, I just wanted to ask this gentleman a question. Have you ever undertaken a project like this before?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have enough backup?
Backup as far as?
People to help you out, this?
People to help me out, well, that's something, uh, my cohort here, Mr. Thoreau, uh, he will be leaving soon and hopefully we'll be able to replace him. But between myself and whoever comes in, we should have enough.
So, we wouldn't...
I'm not going out and connecting all this stuff up. That's got AT&amp;T's gonna be here now.
No, no, but it wouldn't have a situation where people would show up to work one day and there'd be problems and no one to help them solve. But, um, interruption in service, how's that, is that a real concern?
There's no difference between, I beg your pardon? There's no difference between what we have now and that, that people don't show up to work, does it make a difference what system?
I didn't say anything about people not showing up to work.
Well, I'm, I'm saying...
I'm asking this gentleman if, when there's the changeover, if there will be a problem. There's nothing to do with...
What, what we do.
Get in the weeds, y'all, get in the weeds. We talked about this at the workshop. Mr. Jordan, do you have another question?
I have a few, actually. And, I mean, nothing I'm saying, I, I, isn't any indication that I'm opposed to this. I think this is absolutely necessary. We can't move into the future without this and you need the security this provides. Um, but with that, um, a few things. You were talking about the court, about this being a private network. If you set this up, are you gonna be able to use this so that consumers in the courthouse will be able to have access to the internet?
Well, part of this whole project is provide wireless in the courthouse. I don't know if anybody's even noticed, but I have put a wireless device here. It has a guest network connection.
Yeah. Is this, is this in the dark side too?
No, it's, it's L C guest. I, I've been just kind of monitoring to see who discovered it and, and what kind of tribe are they getting on it. Um, and eventually, at some point, it would become public knowledge. At some point, of course, during meetings, uh, we would have the access code on, on the screens when you come in so I can make it even more secure. For right now, it's just been kind of a guest concept. Uh, I've been allowing people to just kind of discover it on its own and see what happens from there. But, yes, eventually, if you're in the courthouse, at least, and this would have to be discussed with the attorney and with the board also, but some form of guest access would be provided, I, I can see at least during meetings. I don't...
Wouldn't you try that?
Yes, ma'am, I can try it on that.
We need...
I can see who connects, what, what tribe is probably, along the connect.
Yes, ma'am.
The time is good, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
But that's not give access to the county now?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, it's totally separated.
No, you're bringing in a large amount of data and from a, from an attorney's point of view, we need access to the internet when we're here in the courthouse. That's not just for these type of public meetings.
And I understand, I understand that, but that has to do with courtside, the state of Florida, and the judges that are actually seated over there. So, I mean, the judge, of course, that's his little kingdom while he's in session. If he doesn't want people doing stuff, then that's his prerogative.
Okay, so you'd have the ability depending on whether or not they wanna get it?
Yes, sir. And again, that's, that, they would have to discuss that with the judges, they would discuss that with Circuit Eight, um, and also discussions with the attorney, what legalities there is for us to provide.
Okay. I have a question for, question for the commission. Um, since, would you be able to set up a line item for internet service so that you're not charging the individual departments? So that you just have, you pay the internet bill, you provide it to the departments, and that way you get rid of the issue of who has to pay more and who has to pay less? You just pay the bill and you provide it? Can you do that?
Well, that's pretty much the way it happens now, it's just it's in each person's budget.
Right, so you take it off their budget?
Take it, take it out of their budget, take the money back and...
Right.
Next year, you'd have to re-budget to do it the way you're talking about. But this year, all the budgets are already out and they had their payments coming out.
No, I understand, I understand, but...
It'd be just like the telephone service in the future. You'd have an internet service that takes amount of dollars, the board would budget that into an internet service.
Right, and not, and just not bill them so you don't have disputes over who's paying what. Okay. This question goes towards having to pay that nine thousand dollars. If AT&amp;T is running fiber optics, they're tearing up roads and they're putting fiber optics down there, they wanna charge us for that, they're setting up a hub there. They, they can use...
This is one of the negotiating points.
I understand. They can use that hub to provide services to the consumers out there. So, they're basically, they wanna bill you for that because they're gonna have a commercial aspect to that.
Again, this is, this is something that I've discussed with them. That's why we went from seventeen thousand out to nine thousand. I'm still trying to push that forward, saying, look, you know, by bringing this out there, this also provides you with the ability to provide service to the people out there. So, we're just one of the people here providing service.
What speeds do they guarantee?
Now, again, this, and this goes to what we're looking at here, okay? This is a business class internet, this is not consumer grade.
I understand. What speeds do they guarantee?
I guess, and it's on this, on the breakdown, but depending on, on the department and size it is, and it is from ten megabits, ten megabit to a hundred megabit. So, here at the courthouse would be a hundred megabit, I believe, verge EMS would be a hundred megabits. Public safety, okay. Um, and everybody else would be ten megabit.
What timeframe do they guarantee for laying, for, for setting this up?
Well, we have to get approved contract and...
Well, I, the timeframe starts from the day the contract is approved.
They're, they're ready to, I'm getting emails every other day from them, wanting to know where we are in this. They're ready to go.
Yes, what timeframe would they tell you it's gonna take until latest?
Uh, I haven't, I, I'll be honest, I have not dealt with that.
And, um, this would go to Ms. Brown. Um, I assume you'd wanna put in that if we terminate for cause, there's gonna be no charge.
We'll try that, we'll know whether they'll accept that. If you have negotiation.
Thank you.
Mr. Rooks?
Without this work done going on, where is your prior order already being? The clerk's office or the board offices?
This is gonna be in the clerk's office.
This is where, that's the three of you questions, but, um, I am, Mr. Ship is my, my employer. I know ultimately I'm employed by a company.
And it responded that.
I understand it, but I, I have to direct again, word to Mr. Ship. This is one of the things I think this county really needs is to come up with a county IT department. I provide, the clerk's office has the most technology of any department, any elected official here in the county. It is the reason why the clerk's office needs a full-time IT position. I have been providing IT for the county.
How come to your salary a week back?
Y'all pay everybody's salary in Levy County.
What do you mean?
Everybody. I pay his because he works for me. I pay his 'cause he works for me, y'all budget it to me.
Right.
Just like you do anybody that's in the supervisory election. Um, any, any of the constitutional officers to share? And he's been my, and he hadn't, but I've had an IT man ever since I've been here. There was one year before I come here that was one of them. Somewhere down the line, when we started trying to help the outside areas with their computers, it become that my IT man was a county man. That's not necessarily the case. Y'all budget him for me, just like you do Randy for Oz. And Randy works on Oz's computer, but he don't go outside and work on them. So there's no difference between me and the other constitutional officers. Now, another point that we might make since we're in this discussion is that the county might need an IT person. Now, I've got it budgeted for two. I've got one and a half right now.
Oh man.
He graduates decent and, uh, I can tell you that Texas Instruments has already hired him because of the type of knowledge he's gotten in computers. January the ninth, he will be with Texas Instruments, he's moving out to Texas and taking a job with them. He was a great help to me when mine left, or when mine got to where they couldn't get along and I had to get rid of him. He come in here, his daddy is a technician for Bradford County, been there twenty years. Uh, he was one of the causes of that here, but I got his son to help him. And, uh, he's been great, I appreciate what he's done for Indiana County, you know, and other places that he's went to. But, um, I've got Keith a technical person here for the court systems and the recording systems and that type of stuff.
So this next person, that's what we're coming in on?
I'd like for the board to hire him and use him instead of me being responsible for him.
Why can't we hire him all the time at the workshop? We can sit here and get y'all, y'all back and forth, we can work it all out in the workshop. That's why Ms. Lily called, she thought it'd be good to have a workshop, and I do too. We can sit here and y'all, y'all and scratch these those behind all day long and ain't got none to purge.
Well, the one question that I have, and I'm gonna ask before we do our job, is there, is any, what other counties have done this this way? Or are all counties already on this current system and we're just?
Uh, Ms. Weeks, I can't. So I come from the private industry. This is my first foray into, into public, into public, uh, arena.
Man, George landed.
Oh yes, worse, it has been, it has been, it really has been, it has been. Um, I can tell you from talking to Andrew's father at Bradford, um, talking to other people in this position, it seems like the general way the counties have set it up is there's a county IT department and it's managed by the board. Because again, like I said, the clerks have the most technology of anybody in the county. And it's in the clerk's best interest to make sure of course that he's able to provide the services needed to serve the county residents. So, that's the way it's worked and everybody that I spoke to. I can't speak to all fifty-two or fifteen, whatever county. Thank you.
He didn't get a seat in history.
I graduated from cheap, I like that statement.
Wow, that'd be on a big list.
Really?
Alright, you got your four tires on the ground, okay? Alright, we're doing this thing, put the stairs really good, alright, that's the workshop. Do we need to make a motion?
Alright.
Thank you sir.
Oh, you have four, Darren?
Yes sir.
That all, Mr. Grant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a statement and I have a question. My statement is getting back to your option, or ability to opt out. I've always found over the years, if it's not in writing, it didn't happen. Now, the question is, if, for whatever reason you have to opt out, is your dark side information lost?
Yes sir, as long as we have connections to the internet, it's not lost. Anything that's placed, any places, if the information is placed out on a dark site, is, is there permanently, it's, it just, we're not gonna go down with internet here in courthouse. Here, if we do, there's a lot more problems going on in the county than just here.
No, I'm saying if the county has to opt out of this plan.
This plan has nothing to do with that, that dark side.
It's not part of AT&T.
And now you gotta be saying, Mr. Rooks.
Started something.
This, this AT&T would have nothing to do with this other than providing the access connections between. Whoever I have in place as far as my internet access, that dark site will still be there and will still be operational. It, it's outside the boundaries of AT&T.
Alright. Yes sir. Please state your name for the record.
Michael Whiting with the Gardening Atlanta Program. We negotiated with the clerks to centralize our office in Chieftain to work with the Antigone's towns. I appreciate the IT and all of the services as the county is responsible for keeping us in phones, computers and whatnot. It's been great, we are suffering, uh, we have a office of four employees and there are times between ten and two in the afternoon and late morning, we're shut down in our office. Our service is just not working. And, uh, this is what's prompted me to come down and back up Mr. Renington. And I'm enthused that Mr. Jordan is excited, although it's hard to tell when he's excited. That, uh, that we're gonna get this big, uh, wheels on the ground. So, uh, I appreciate that, I just want to let you know that we are suffering. Our court reports are a problem and our internet goes down and we are slow as to, I think it was point free the other day, it was supposed to have free the other day. Um, you know, it takes me twenty minutes to write one sentence of email. It just shuts us down, so we do need to, uh, address this.
Feeling under, to, to help the board to understand is they do the majority of their business connected to Grand Lhasi via the internet.
Yeah, that's our subject.
Well, that's.
Alright, I think we've had enough information today. I'm, I'm hungry for knowledge, but I am very good at lunch. We still got more ground to cover, thank you Darren, please, please. Let's work together, let's not have any barriers, let's get this done so we can make a decision sooner rather than later. It sounds like everybody wants this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, Ms. Ayman?
It's now, but that's what I'm doing. I had an item to ask the board to consider, a settlement offer in appropriate state, uh, county. Uh, claims for ambulance services. Unfortunately, the program was received in my office outside the time allowed for filing claims. While we decided to got it, um, I did a motion in response, uh, asking for an extension of the time file based on an argument that they should have served me directly. I do not know whether the court would agree with that argument. Uh, I, there is no case law on that. So, the personal representative contacted me when we got the petition and offered to settle at fifty percent of the price of the claim. The claim is for one thousand one hundred forty-three hours and seventy-one cents. And I, I'm getting ready that offer and ask you, whether you wanna accept the penalty offer and make another counter offer or decline, if you decline then, or if the counter offer is not accepted, then I would act of guarantee, just like I was saying, county and make a limit. There's a risk that you may not comply, there's a risk that the court will not accept. I don't know.
So we either take five seventy-one sixty-six guaranteed or we roll the dice?
Counter offer or decline.
Um, I make the counter offer then five percent.
A motion by Ms. Commissioner Jordan to counter offer at seventy-five percent. We need to put a real number on that or?
Seventy-five, they didn't put a real number to me, they made it fifty percent.
Um, may have second by Commissioner Rooks, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Jordan, it's a bad idea. We can't afford to send your county attorney to Dixie County over five hundred dollars. You're talking about her time and the value of her time versus two hundred dollars.
Yeah, but if we make the reputation, if we give in to everybody that wants to make a counter offer to us, that's fifty percent of less than what they owe us, then everybody's gonna do it.
No, I, I mean, yes, it's, it's case by, it's a case by case issue and considering the legal issues here that we've made a late claim and the odds of the judge ruling in her favor, it's a reasonable offer. She's got a fifty percent chance of losing on this issue. There's no case law in her favor.
That's all the time, fifty, seventy-five percent.
No, it's not, it's not, it's, it's the time of your, of your attorney being out of her office and not working versus the money. It's not the question of the money, it's the question of how valuable is it to Levy County to have your lawyer not working on other issues which are more important and worth more money to Levy County? Because she's way more valuable in her office than she is driving to Dixie County to try to collect five hundred dollars. That's the issue.
I make the motion, seven five percent.
We have a motion and second, is there further discussion? All favor, please signify by saying aye.
Alright.
Opposed. Is that it?
That's all I have.
Alright, we've reached our second public comment section. Does anybody would like to speak on behalf of a public comment, please do so.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ship, last meeting was the Monday four. You were kind enough to tell me that the, um, during the hearing for the budget hearings, the nightly hearing, that you were not there because you had a medical emergency, which I'm sorry to hear. And I have a follow-up question. And you said your request was turned in to the board, uh, of county commissioners and empty time in August and for the wages of your personnel. And I have a simple question for you. Mr. Jared Brenton, I think is the gentleman's name, your CPA? Uh, he was standing at this podium and had said that he personally would do this other wage increase, but that he would love to see the rest of your employees receive the three percent like all other county employees. And I, and that he understood that this was a request in the eleventh hour for the board to grant that wage increase to your employees. Would you please tell me how come Mr. Brenton had to make that eleventh hour request, which was granted by his local?
I have to turn a budget in in June first, just like any other constitutional officer. And my budget was turned in for that amount on, on June the first. It had come before the board a few times and even that night, I think it got, well, the meeting before that, it got off on something else and didn't never get finished or approved. So he had to come back at the last meeting to get it approved because it hadn't been approved by the board along with the rest of the ones.
Same question, please share.
That amount of money was in the original request for the clerk.
So the eleventh hour was just the last hour before the final hearing.
Did it get dropped? No? Was it dropped, does that like?
Anybody else who pulled a comment this morning, this afternoon? Yes ma'am.
Okay, now I'm confused, did it get dropped from the budget, it's somewhere along the way?
No ma'am, it was always in the budget. There was a time during the budget process that everybody was told to go back to last year's actual. I did that, everybody else did that. And then the process kept going on and the three percent was granted, uh, for the county employees and four percent for the sheriffs. And some of the other increases in the budget was granted. My three percent for my increase and my retirement, which was thirty-nine thousand dollars total, was never approved by the board when things started changing in the different meetings. So it was still, I was still back at the last year's actual at the eleventh hour when he come for the final budget hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else who pulled a comment? Alright, moving forward, uh, Mr. Sheriff is ditchless, is he just ready to go home? Mary Ann Weiss?
Uh, this Saturday is our one-year anniversary for the South TV Marketplace. From, we're open from nine to one, please come in. It's gonna be a big celebration.
Mary Ann?
Uh, we'll be having twenty classic cars there as well as karaoke. So, it's gonna be a good event.
Alright, um, Mr. Lippman? He's gone, sorry. He got tired waiting on us too. Um, I guess that's it. Uh, de facto, uh, representative from Brandon Springs, off the quiet. Bannon's still there despite itself.
Yeah, the same as the president.
Yeah, the one, one final on the election day for one seat. Trey Locke versus Chair for Paddock Morris, I think, is that the area name or something?
So did one seat get filled or was there two seats?
There was actually three, but two, one was unopposed. Uh, only one person registered. The third seat that was up, the guy didn't, he stayed, he didn't step down. So there's only two up for election and one. There was three running for one seat and only one running for the other. I said, Bannon Springs there despite itself. But thanks for asking, Bannon likes being recognized.
Commissioner Rooks, Commissioner Jordan?
Uh, Mike Smith died over the weekend.
Right.
And his funeral is at, the building is set up tomorrow, funeral at eleven o'clock in Wilf. In the morning, yes. So Donald Satchel died over the weekend and as of this morning, I haven't heard many of his services as well. I think John's helping me therapy, I don't know.
I heard that they had made a final on that because it was, there were things decremented and there was some, some question about doing it at a later time, but I'm not sure about that. Somebody mentioned that to me yesterday.
Clark, Clark is Saturday morning. Right, provide Saturday morning, we're gonna start it. I think we're gonna be there eight-thirty, right guys?
I'm there eight o'clock.
Eight, eight, eight o'clock, eight-thirty.
I'll be there, I'll be there.
I was there, I was just there, I was just there somewhere else in the parking lot. If I tell myself eight, I'll be there at eight-thirty. If I tell myself, hey, I'll be there this evening.
Office Haven this Saturday night at five-thirty.
I'm not looking so long.
And the Martin Baptist Church, Preacher Ryan, and Gospel things, twenty-nine.
What time? Eight in the morning. That's why nobody's against me. Ten, the Morrison Baptist Church.
No, 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 she was asking about the viewing tomorrow.
Oh, from the church.
Uh, the church, John, yeah, no, the church of God, yeah. Then the gospel thing, Preacher Ryan, twenty-nine, at five, six o'clock, five o'clock here.
Slidely?
That's it.
Still working on bug issues on roads.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our new director of public safety attended a meeting with me Saturday. I'm trying to remember where it was at.
Found it.
It was last Saturday weekend. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And it was good. I appreciate, he gave us his family to come out there and answer questions and we, we, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good meeting.
Well, good having a start. They're glad they were being with the family, they're glad we're here. Thanks.
I tried to talk him out of it, because I knew what he meant, and he shouldn't say he talked me out of it.
Alright, who else? Commissioner Weeks?
As well as got Friday rounds and, they have everyone walking in, it's a cheap one, but it's so rough. Yes, uh, I got a list.
I think you better send my email.
I don't know, I did. Friday, October twenty-first, twenty-second. That's the haunted house in Chief Run. And then Trunker Treat, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, you have that?
Twenty-nine.
You must still be emailing and then talking about my events. Wow, man.
Huh.
That's it.
It's in Boston. Trunker Treat, twenty-ninth.
Well, they have one at the haunted house in Chief Run too.
Same night.
So there, he didn't steal anything.
And then Mr. Myers already judged on the twenty-second. Right provide. And then we have Haven. And then there's a horse ride in Goody, for breast cancer awareness. A long drive on Time Warner, truly hidden, Goody's St. Forest. He says it's a whole day to do.
Outside of the German frog.
And then Friday, October the twenty-eighth, two P.M. You time the party, Miss Shinerese? Where?
First Baptist Church.
First Baptist Church, Rob's in Florida.
This is your life?
And then six P.M., uh, the Friday, October twenty-eighth, that's a day long, I'm gonna shoot a fish broil. We'll be in Chief. And then seven thirty, October the twenty-eighth. Uh, so Chief Run, Lake Williston, and we'll be kept at last, and Chief.
We want it back.
Uh, Allison informed this morning that, uh, Ms. Candy Allen, Mr. Robert Allen, who works for the road department, has required Ms. Candy passed away over the weekend, so going to his family. Kirby Farm has a lost railroad, it is starting this weekend and runs through Halloween over in Williston. We did run it for five. And the seafood festival was last weekend and from all accounts that I had of it, it was a tremendous success. Nope, this time he says no.
No, worst weekend I've spent over the long time. Evidently on Sunday, a lot of people thought T.P. was still under work. We never had the crowds that we usually have. Saturday, once for the people that were there, everything from, but they were so argumentative that it wasn't real enjoyable.
I'm sorry to hear that. Uh, Harney Town Baptist Church Thursday, ten A.M. is the viewing, eleven A.M. is the viewing. So, that's all I have.
I forgot one thing. October twenty-ninth, at the WGP, we're having a hollow clean. Come in your costume, help clean up the preserve from some of the debris that was around from the hurricane and a pizza party.
You don't have a Gucci Gucci go preserve, thank you tonight, don't you?
No, I came here.
Alright, do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
Make the motion, pay the bill.
Another motion and second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, minutes from August sixteenth, twenty sixteen.
I didn't see anyone, I read them last night.
And this may be kinda nitpicky, but, uh, under Nature Coast Business Development Council, uh, we talked about the Enterprise Zone giving funds back to the county. I think somewhere along there, we need to note the funds were then in turn given by this board to the uh, Nature Coast Business Development Council. Just so we can now represent a question about, what is happening with those funds? And other than that, I think that was it. Yes, ma'am.
Does the board still have the policy that if you want to, um, present something at a board meeting, that the cutoff is noon preceding Wednesday?
No, ma'am, it's Thursday.
Oh, it's been noon?
Well, it's what we had to go to because things come in so late, so we put a restriction. I, I know, I called and had something afternoon on Wednesday, so.
Well, we have done that, except for doing non-agenda items, but the policy, as far as I know, didn't change from Wednesday at noon.
The policy hasn't changed, but officially.
Well, is there any way we, the public, can encourage the board to at least have the agenda online by Friday? Or is that?
Agenda is supposed to be online by Friday.
Well, it wasn't this week and it wasn't Sunday night.
Well, maybe this week was a.
Plus, three quarters of the attachments were on it.
We'll work on it.
Did, did you want a formal change to the policy?
No, 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 we don't need to change it, it just, it just goes. Noon is not the cutoff.
It, it doesn't.
It does go.
It doesn't always work out that way, and I understand that, and I appreciate that very often.
Did we get a motion to pay the minutes?
Of the approval minutes?
Was there a change?
With the challenge?
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, before we leave, I think, alright, anybody has anything else needs to come forward this board today? Seeing none?
Oh, I wanna thank you. Thank you.
I may be absent.
Okay, I wanna thank all the members who wear pink rock. Had a legitimate excuse, called me this morning. But he had it in his heart, and I thought I might. Thank you, buddy.
This is your life. I like getting involved, you know, do something.